All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Winsboro Plan and Zoning Commission. Like at the record show that we got a forum of commissioners here in attendance, and the committee was posted in the quarters of the Texas Open Meetings Act, Governor Code Chapter five one. We hereby officially call this meeting to order at five thirty. Everybody, please quiet yourself, phone, put them on silent, everything else not to disrupt the meeting. And we will now open it up for public comments. Anybody have any comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Um.
If you would please step to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi there. I'm Newby. This is my first time to be here in a long time. Been a resident, my name is Catherine, or Kitty Stevens. I'm a retired RN. And I've been in Winsboro, the Winsboro area since nineteen eighty. If I understand from what the paper said, but your discussion, that I wanted to, I want to hear both of the sign ordinance. As far as I know, when I moved into Winsboro, they did not, I did not have to sign anything like at Holly Lake that says, "I will agree with your bylaws of what can and cannot be done inside Holly Lake." Signs are a form of free speech unless they are written in a vulgar or drawn in a vulgar way. I don't think there should be any objection to any sign put in anybody's yard or left in anybody's yard. I should have the right to put who I vote for, who I'm voting against, what I stand for, that I back the blue, whatever I want to do. That is my right, is my freedom of speech. And last of all, if I want to put a sign in my shop, in my yard, that says, "I think that the city council needs to get rid of Greglin Home," that is also my right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get the address?
Three oh four Church Street.
Anything else, anybody else, public comments?
If anybody has anything to say about an agenda item too, if we can wait till that item comes up. There's public comments for any that might not be on the agenda that we can't address at this time that you want to be heard with. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to number, item number three, discussion and approval of minutes from the last meeting on five four twenty one. Is that right? No.
Six.
Six, one point five. Does anybody have an opportunity to read through them?
Yep.
I'll make a motion, that'll be second then, it sounds pretty good.
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion passed. At this time, we had a request from the owner of the barrel house that we do move up their item six and seven so they can get to work. But we will be rearranging the schedule and going straight to item six.
Yes. May I come up here? I'd like to stand. Good evening, commissioners. Item number six is discussion and possible action on the use of storage containers as commercial facilities, particularly in outdoor dining settings and even in retail settings. This has become very commonplace throughout the country. Shoring, storage or shipping containers are modified in accordance with the current building codes frequently used for permanent commercial spaces. Sections of the Winsboro Code of Ordinance, Sections eighteen point two seven and eighteen point two eight in B two Business District Regulations of the Winsboro Code of Ordinances currently allows the use of portable buildings for commercial use only on a temporary basis for a maximum of one hundred and eighty days. A storage container would be considered to be a temporary or a portable building since it is brought in and dropped down. Staff suggests that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to city council an amendment to the current ordinances that it would allow for the usage of, for the usage intended upon approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission of storage containers for retail use and for any type of commercial use only in B two. Okay, not in B one, not in residential, none of those, simply in B two or anything below, underneath B two, which would be industrial or agricultural, which basically means that we would allow a modified storage container needing existing building codes could be used as a permanent structure. And we're looking to the Planning and Zoning Commission for recommendation for council because council would be the one that would actually consider the ordinance. So are there any questions to that? I think you have a copy of the ordinance attached where it shows you, the language needs to be tweaked, the language needs to be modified for their usage.
Yeah, and it shows in there that it has to meet building code.
Yes, sir.
It can just be stuck out there in the middle.
Right, right.
Any questions?
So just to be clear, once it's placed, it's going to be plumbed, electrical, just like any other permanent building would be, so it's not mobile once it's placed?
Not mobile.
Right.
Okay.
It's going to be permanent at that point, okay? It's going to be used for any kind of commercial use or recreational use. It has to have plumbing, air conditioning, you know, electrical and all of that.
What about the, uh, look of it? I mean, is there any, we have anything in here that, I mean, is just, anybody can just stick a metal building there and put plumbing in it, or we have to make it look, match the building?
I think that the way that the, or, correct me if I'm wrong, Angie, but I think that it has to come back to y'all for approval for the facade.
So it would go, come here first and then go council?
It'll go to council. So y'all would have, you know, a recommendation of council, it shouldn't be painted or, you know, it should be made to look nice. Okay, all we need from the Alton High for this one is just a recommendation for council.
Yeah, does anybody have any public comments? Anybody want to say anything about this agenda item?
This agenda item, correct.
Have a picture, if you want to see mine.
Yes.
Actually, yeah.
That's on the next item.
That's on the next item.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay, well, nevermind.
Oh, yes.
You get to share, tell, tell on that next item.
Oh, okay.
I hear you. Motion?
I'll make a motion if someone will get the word in chief that we amend the ordinance to allow a storage facility within B two. So we watch the language?
It doesn't, it doesn't say as a change, it's only for B two. When it include that in it.
All this is saying is that you move that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the recommended change, chapter fourteen, exhibit B, section eighteen twenty seven and eighteen twenty eight into a court of ordinance and forward to city council for consideration. And that deals with B two and it deals with storage, okay? That's all you need to say.
I hear motion. Wait, we can just read that.
So I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the recommended change to chapter fourteen, exhibit B, section eighteen twenty seven and eighteen twenty eight of the Winsboro Code of Ordinance, as to forward to city council for consideration.
Motion.
And a second.
All four?
Aye.
Motion passed. Moving on to the numbers, item number seven.
Yes, Chair. The owners of the Barrel House Restaurant are requesting the use of the storage containers restroom facilities in an outdoor dining area of their facility. The outdoor area will allow for additional seating for dining and entertainment. The owners have agreed to place a windshield in the storage container from view from the street or paint the container, make it an attractive, an attractive addition to their business. And they're here to answer your question, to do our presentation.
Hello, everybody. Um, I don't know if I saw the picture. Adding the shipping container allows us to get some more restaurants to handle plus. To me, the allowing shipping containers in other cities and stuff has been done in an artistic way and it looks really, really nice. And it's also makes good use of something that would normally probably sit in the yard and, you know, and go bad and especially with the way process of wood are and wood use and milling. But they do really make great storage, retail spaces, offices, restrooms, better than porta potties. This is kind of a picture. Now you guys can see that. I don't know, makes you want to get a box of crayons. You know, I didn't have a drawing software, so anyway, bear notice, you know, little metal fence here and a, where we put up a fence here.
It'd be a wooden fence can, can hide it.
Yes, and it's going to be painted to match the building. I mean, it's not, it's not going to stay the way it is.
It's driving through, you'll never know what it is. Really, yeah, okay.
No, landscaping, it's going to look nice, both sides is going to look, both sides is going to look nice, so, um, and then...
But you want to be able to see it, right, since and from the street, you want to be able to see it because it'll be behind the wooden fence.
Right.
Behind the fence.
Yes, you won't be able to see it, it's just going to look like a pretty fence and you're going to just assume it's somebody's backyard, which it kind of will be because this is my next picture, not so much the color on this one.
This looks pretty good, I like this one, this is even better.
Yeah, but we, the barn, there's a barn over here that we're getting ready to turn into kind of a small, small event, like for us, when we're having outdoor events and, but the yard's going to be enclosed, it's all going to be metal fencing, which we already have. And so, the shipping container is kind of hidden over here on the street side here, and so it's not going to be visible from the street and it's going to look nice from inside the yard as well. And basically, we did pour concrete blocks and those are technically permanent, it's a permanent foundation. And it can be strapped down and it's going to be covered up and it's going to look like a permanent structure. I mean, it will be. So we're paying electrical, plumbing, water, air conditioning.
So there's no holding tank or anything, whether you're actually going to plonk it into the city's...
Right, yeah, yeah, but there will be the need to have a safety tank come out and empty it out. So to me, it's much, much cleaner and environmentally friendly and...
And that would be a requirement anyway.
Right, right. That's what, that's what I want to make, when I first read storage container, I thought, oh, how do they do that either? And it's kind of weird.
Well, we've been to a few places already that use them. So especially like Lacey Hall in Plainfield, that's a nice place, nice, nice place. They use them for restrooms. Yard and Waco uses them, just went to Oklahoma City, they use them. Just about anywhere you go, you start looking around, you start seeing them everywhere. Everybody's using them for retail spaces and restrooms, bars.
Just out of curiosity, is there any insulation in those things?
Not yet. Only thing to it, the only thing that happens is doors and partitions.
So you're going to have to insulate, just like you would any other cellar house or something?
Yeah. You have any questions?
That's it, thank you.
All right, it's, it's not going to look the way it is, it's, I know it's a nice...
Well, I actually do have one.
We're kind of old like snow.
You said you were going to paint the, uh, the shell, so you...
It'll match the building, yes.
Okay, so you're not going to put any like brick or wood or anything around it? Other than the fence, I mean, on the...
Just the fence, on the, from the street side, yes. The other part will be painted to match the building and of course landscaped around it.
Awesome.
All right, thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I move the Planning and Zoning approved the request of plans for the Barrel House to move and forward it to the city council for consideration. Intention upon approval of ordinance, and the city council at their next regular meeting.
A second.
Motion and a second, all approved?
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion passed. All right, now we go back up to item number four. Sign ordinance, discussion only.
Commissioners and Chair, I'd like to make a point that again, this is a discussion only. No action is going to be taken tonight. This is a discussion for y'all to talk about what we've done with the sign ordinance up to this point and basically continuation of the sign ordinance that already exists in our downtown area throughout the city. I would like to point out a couple of things. Number one thing I'd like to point out, the current signed ordinance nor any future sign ordinance addresses anything about political signs, either in residential areas or commercial areas, which we saw during the campaign, they were out there, there's not going to be any changes. That's, that's not it. This sign ordinance addresses commercial advertising signs. That's all it addresses. So you can say whatever you want to say in your own yard or in your own business. So with that said, and that, I have no plans to ask this board or the council to make any changes on that. It's never been the intent of this, and I think that y'all are very well aware of that despite what you might read on the misinformation sites out there in social media. So with that said, I'm going to turn this over to y'all because this is your discussion. Y'all are going to be guiding and leading this discussion. I'll be here to answer any questions. You have before you the existing downtown site ordinance, you have the Mineola sign ordinance, and I believe that you also have one for Fredericksburg. So do with it what you like and staff will take what you have and wordsmith it, bring it back to you, send it to the city attorney, make sure the legality is there because there are public speech, freedom of speech issues. Considered, throw out all this, and I agree completely with Mel's best well on that. So you all just give us some guidance as to what you want to do.
I thank you.
Who wants to start off the discussion? If I have any comments?
Well, I re-read the whole thing today. And I really didn't see anything that was out of the ordinary. I noticed that Mineola is, is very similar to what we have in place already. The wording is a little bit different, but the meaning is the same. So...
Well, there's a few changes in, you know, and one of them specifically in Silver Springs, there, uh... Prohibited signs, under the prohibited signs section, well, signs placed... Signs placed or fixed to vehicles and trailers, which are parked in public right of... You know, I did, I guess, there's some things you take as if that's already in place, but I guess it's not been in our sign ordinance, it's not. And I think it probably a pretty good idea to add, so somebody can't just park a vehicle with a big jack bill board on the public right of base.
So that's just basically talking about using a vehicle like a mobile billboard?
Second, and that's, I actually talked to city manager, so I mentioned about that and that's what he was, their council felt like, what, that they're going to have a billboard ordinance and allow addition, disallow additional billboards, that it wasn't right to put a billboard on a sixteen footer, twenty foot trailer and park it in the driveway.
So that one, right, you all, student, business mail on there, parking?
Well, does that pertain to private land? Sir? Would that pertain to...
If you could step up to the podium and just give us your name and address.
Uh, hi.
How?
I'm Bob Miller, and I'm going to be at two eighteen Main Street. And the trailer occasionally being somewhere on your, on land that is not public land, is that going to be illegal if we parked it on, on land that was owned by someone in town?
So what you're saying is if it was, say, a steakhouse, and you want to advertise it, but you don't have property, but you know somebody that does, and you want to park it on their private property?
Well, no, if you just maybe pulled it, pulled it over there for a particular event or something, that's not going to be illegal, is it, if you...
Well, that's a temporary, that would be like a temporary sign, not a permanent sign, correct?
Yes.
And that would be addressed...
In that case, you would have to have a permit.
I think you'd have to have a permit for a temporary sign.
It's a great question, can we defer to that?
And it depends on how long it's there, because that could also be considered, if it's going to be there permanently, it'd be considered off-premise advertising.
Yes.
So, on a temporary basis for an event, that wouldn't be a problem, as long as it's not on a public right of way, Rob.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
You just come to talk to us, we'll work you out a sign permit.
Yeah, it wouldn't be stuck there all the time, it's just like if we're going to have something going on with an entertainer or something.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yes, okay, cool, thank you.
May I ask another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yeah, my name is Kitty Stevens, for the three oh four Church Street. Um, so what about people that own businesses like carpenters, plumbers, this type of thing, that have their, their company's name on little trailers that they haul their equipment in, on their trucks, this kind of thing? And they park it at their house, maybe in front of their house, so they can get out the next day? Is that going to include this?
That's not a problem.
That's not the issue. It's, it's permanently placed as an advertising thing. Okay, so that will be drawn out in verbiage? It is there.
I don't think anybody's ever had a problem with somebody having an advertisement beside their truck parked in their own driveway. I mean, nobody else...
Well, what if they have to park in front of their house?
That's not a problem, that's not...
But you said, but you said on public right of way.
Public, permanent signage in public right of ways.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
And the public, in the public right of way. Does anybody else have any comments on the sign ordinance they would like to share at this time? Nobody?
I have a question.
Okay.
As you notice in like Silver Springs ordinance, and I think the Fredericksburg's ordinance, and some larger cities' ordinance, they have different specific zoning areas and specifics about the signs that are allowable in those zoning areas. Is this some direction that the commission feels like we need to be moving toward at this time, with specific sizes and things like that? Or is this something that we feel like can wait? Or do we not have?
Well, I mean, I think that the sign ordinance is such a big, I mean, it's huge. I mean, a page after page after page. And, you know, we're trying, we're trying to work out right now to do the workshop to where we can jump a nail down a little bit better. But now, because none of us want to send anything to council for consideration without having to make sure eyes are dotted and ears are crossed to the legality of everything. Make sure as many people as possible can be happy with it. I know not everybody's going to be happy with everything, but, you know, that's just life. So as of right now, there's a lot of things that are highlighted that I like to see, the off-premise signs, the, um, vehicle signs, stuff, stuff like that, that I would definitely like to see added. Um, I think there definitely should be a, some sort of parameter on how big a sign can be. You know, a downtown area or somewhere shouldn't have a giant billboard in the middle or sticking off the building here or some, yeah, yeah. You know, and I, and I think most people would agree that that is the case. You know, I don't think Vic wants a, you know, two hundred square foot building, one of these buildings. You know, I don't, I don't know, maybe he does, but I wouldn't think that you would. You know, I think a lot of us can agree on most of this. So I think a lot of this probably ought to postpone a little bit until the workshop or get a little bit more nailed down, a little bit more understanding on all of these different cities and providing, providing it with ours. Unless somebody has a different way they want to go on that.
What are your thoughts on that question you asked us?
I think eventually we need to go ahead and start looking for, because you might want something allowable in a industrial district that's not allowable in a key line or a downtown district. And I think, I think we're going to have to become more specific as time goes on. It is, as with regard to the, to specificity of the size and things like that, I think that's something that we can research and figure out what looks good.
It appears that...
Take public comment.
That most of the other cities have a table with sizes, so I think ultimately, yes, we can get there. We can get through the first part of the sign ordinance, that maybe we can get down to creating a table, yeah.
Yeah, there definitely needs to be some amendment. I know months ago, we had an issue with the sign size on the side of the building because of the old ordinance that was, in my opinion, ridiculous, that of the small sign to go up the side of such a large building. You know, so there definitely needs to be some different scaling and different stuff to go on.
But at the same time, I think keeping it simple was better. I mean, I don't want to overcomplicate it. But I definitely, like you said, I think it needs to be some, well, like Cindy said, it needs to be some variations, but maybe not. I mean, you can't just have the one that fits everything. But we don't need to just like make it so detailed that it's super complicated either, so maybe it's not the best.
Right. Anybody else? There's no action to be taken on this item, so we'll move on to the next, um, item, which is item number five, discussion on the historic district.
You have before you the most recent draft of historic district ordinance. It has been reviewed by our city attorney. I don't know if y'all have had an opportunity to look at it since then. Uh, and I'm just asking you what we want to do with it, uh, up to the, you know, from here on out. Was asked to bring it back to y'all for consideration. Any on your instruction, whether you want to go ahead and tweak it a little bit more, look at it a little bit more, opening up for more public comment, or go ahead and send it to council?
I like that we identified, it has to be identified as a contributing building. And that's very clear that if you're not a contributing building, that it doesn't apply to you. Um, I think today in reviewing, we just saw, we could perhaps tweak the wording a little bit on the penalty clause.
Okay.
Okay.
Where is that going to go? Let's go to section...
Page five, section three?
But it is, right, right.
So it doesn't stand still? Um, someone could potentially get a two thousand dollar fine each day until something is corrected, like whatever the offense was.
Right.
And just for review, what are some of the examples that could be an offense?
Oh, for instance, if they painted a building a color that wasn't a contributing, that only applies to contributing buildings. If they changed the facade, changed the awnings to contributing building, those types of things could be an offense.
Or doing sort of, or something like that too, or...
That was more of the vacant building ordinance than was for the table.
Well, and I think too, as far as the offense goes, I mean, all, and all that's set, it was not set by the city, right? The, the dollar amount.
That's, that's state law, that's a state law.
Right, and I, I'm understanding that we're going to try to include that in the wording because a lot of people got it up that you were going to be the one setting the penalty and you were going to be the one enforcing it and taking people's wallet. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that that's not the case, you know, as simplified as much as possible. And that we put that in there as defined by...
The statutes.
Exactly, yeah, the statutes.
Okay.
Other than that, I mean, I like the fact that we clarified that what buildings are what, that it's not residential. That was another big hangup from a lot of people. And that we can, that you can opt out of it, you know, that was another big thing. And then it was going to be, we clarified again that it was going to be determined by the... determined by the historic overlay committee, which is comprised of the people who own the buildings.
Yes, the people that own contributing buildings.
Contributing, yeah, so I like that we clarified that a little bit more, a little bit more simple on that, so that, you know, people can understand that if you don't like it, don't do it. You know, being a part of the committee is if you don't like it, don't do it, it's up to you. So, does anybody, uh, is it, there's people here that might wanna speak on that at all?
One question before, before, on the penalty clause, but it says, um, not exceeding two thousand dollars, is there a minimum? Is there not a minimum for a reason?
Uh, no, the, the, that's up to the discretion of the court.
Okay.
And the court is not.
So it could be zero.
It could be zero, it could be a dollar, it could be five dollars, it could be a hundred bucks. You know, the court isn't going to, unless you have a chronic violator who contribute, continually just flagrantly violates, you're not, you're never gonna see a two thousand dollar bill. You're never gonna see a two thousand dollar bill. And again, it's a contributing building, and the owner's gonna have to, has the option to opt in.
Okay, if you can, I, before you step away, can there be a defined, once you were notified, period of, um, rectifying the, whatever, because we used the example today, if I had something that violated, but it, when I called to get someone to fix it or, or repair, they say, yeah, it can be there in ten days, well, I can't, it's gonna continue to be a violation until someone comes, so if some, if people understand that we're not planning to deem them every day when they're trying to get something fixed.
Right, and we wouldn't be the dingers, or it would be the dingers.
Right.
Uh, the, and the citation would only be issued after due process, uh, after we made an attempt, and I think that we probably should have a clause in there, I think it'd be good to add a clause of whatever, three months, six months, you know.
Surrender.
After, yeah, after notification of violation.
I think thirty days would be good, thirty days, at least present something that you've taken steps towards fixing.
A plan.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, something like that, I think that we ought to add that in here, uh, would be my recommendation, so we might wanna schedule this for another workshop.
Absolutely.
I agree, yeah, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Mr. Lethal.
May I say that?
Public comments on item number, what was it, five? On item number five, again, we'd like to make sure that we've limited the comments to three minutes. Uh, if you would, if you hear the dinger of the timer on the three minutes, please stop, um, and ask if you would like to continue to speak for more time. We don't wanna get in arguments or long-winded comments, so if anybody would like to speak, that would be the time. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Paula Turner Rogers, and I live at eight sixty-two County Road forty-two fifty-five, and, and the sixth generation to live in Windsboro. Uh, who is going to decide what buildings are historical? Now, at one time, we had, uh, the State Historical Society to come in and look, and they did not deem very many buildings historical. So, how, what's gonna be, is it gonna be a hundred years old, or what's gonna be the criteria?
Fifty, fifty years.
Fifty years.
Fifty years.
See, my buildings are over fifty years old, but there's nothing, uh, that is historical about them. They're just brick buildings that were made for the, uh, Arclor Gas, which used to be the gas company, and the telephone company, it was their offices to, you went and paid your payments and stuff like that out of, and I've got a house that was in nineteen twenty-nine.
It's not resident.
Yeah, right, but I mean, in other words, those buildings have been there more than fifty years. Uh, Ted Beatty's Law Office building, part of it was there, but it's been refronted and stuff since then, so, but I wouldn't call them historical buildings.
There's a definition in the proposed, um, ordinance that defines what the historical building is, it's not a private residence, it's at least fifty years old and had retained a significant amount of physical integrity and character-defining features. So, just because it's fifty doesn't automatically make it a historic or contributing building.
And if I may, the beautiful part about this overlay, in my opinion, is that you can first opt out if you don't want any part of it, but, but, but what it does for the downtown areas of Windsboro is unlock an opportunity for funds to be available to those who do wanna opt in, who have a building that qualifies, to have some, a, a huge chunk of your portion granted to you to be able to update your own building. And, and I know you said your buildings are just brick and mortar, and you don't have any historical value, but they do qualify as per the age range, and if you do opt in, you do wanna improve the lightness of your building, and you like the color palette the historical overlay committee has approved, and you like everything that goes on, and you think, hey, I would like to paint my buildings, then you can petition for a grant to help pay for those renovations. And I don't know anybody who would not like to have a grant to help pay for buildings that they wanna renovate. Now, that's just, maybe somebody would say, no, I don't like that free money to help me, but I'm not one of those persons, I would sure like to have help. Um, and, and it's, it's a pretty good chunk, Craig, isn't it, I mean, if I remember, it's like forty-five percent of the renovations? I mean, it's a huge number, in some instances, up to forty-five percent. And, I mean, that's an incredible opportunity for Windsboro, who prides ourself in historic downtown and Autumn Trails and all this history of our town, to be able to have, uh, grants to unlock to fund some of those restorations, and, um, I don't think people understand that, as why we may be having so much pushback, but to hear.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, I mean, to hear people s- talk so much about how much they love history and four generations, and, and then to push back at the store of overlay because they, they don't want it, I, I'm just, I'm confused.
Well, like I said, it, to me, it was confusing as to how you deem a building, like, okay, Oakley Mansion is definitely a historical, it, it's a bed and breakfast, or it used to be, and some of the other houses are part of that way, uh, houses on Elm Street going on the west side, has some very old historical places, and so, you know, but then there's a lot of buildings that aren't historical. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else like to make comment?
Mr. Vic? Good afternoon, good to see y'all, John, it's been a long time.
Yes, sir.
Um, I actually wasn't prepared to speak on anything tonight, I really just came to listen. Um, I, I guess I'm standing here representing a number of building owners who started kind of the process of looking at what y'all are proposing back last fall during COVID. Um, obviously, it's been an interesting year, the city's doing great, it's on track, the world's opening back up, we're all excited. However, owners of the, the buildings have reviewed the documents, and I don't know what the latest draft says, 'cause I just got ahold of it last night, but we engaged some of the best legal counsel last fall to review the document that was on the table, and there were communications with the city attorney. The city attorney has never responded to our attorney's request for explanation about us giving up basically constitutional rights to the buildings. And that's my concern, if I wanna keep a building open after five o'clock in the afternoon, that's my right. If I wanna take a building and put an office in it that I only attend a couple days a week, that's my right.
I'll stop you, I, I, I just, the only reason why I wanna stop is because I wanna clarify a little bit, whoever said he couldn't.
This is not historic district ordinance.
This is.
I think he's talking about the vacant building.
Vacant building.
Vacant building, so to me, it all becomes one, but I'm sorry, I'm, I'll step down, I'll step down, but I'm all for, uh, historic district overlay, I'm all for people getting funds to fix up their buildings. I am one who generally does not want funds from the city, because I feel like that money should go to local people who need the money, not people who have a thriving, successful business, who just need it because it's available to them. That should go to new businesses for locals who are trying to start a business and stay local, who don't have the means. That's what the money should be for, and not all of it, but a good chunk of it, maybe we look into that fifty percent of it. You have to qualify financially, if you're making a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, maybe you don't need that.
I don't think that's a safe, that's a good question.
You know, I'm just throwing out ideas, and I know we only got three minutes, but anything that I, will help benefit Windsboro, I'm all for. But I would ask that if y'all go back into session, that we allow the attorney that all of us have engaged, before it goes to another level, to give you input for your discussion, take a look at it, see if it's reasonable, and then we work it out, so we don't have to keep going back and forth, and I don't have to stand in front of the city council and go, we're gonna be in court over this, 'cause I don't wanna be there. I got a lot of businesses to do myself, and, yeah, I wanna get them fixed.
Do you have a redline version from your attorney?
Yeah, we do, what I'm concerned with is that was all done around December of last year, and then we were, we had been waiting for a response from the city attorney, no response has ever been received, so I no longer know what draft.
Well, but if, if, if your attorney had questions and things that could be clarified, we can look at those and.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, I mean, I'll have you those tomorrow if you want, and the city already has them, I know Craig had turned them over to the city attorney.
Well, and I would just clarify too, I don't want any, I don't, I, I don't wanna see any documents right now on vacant buildings, 'cause we tableed them, it's not anything on this discussion.
And most of those were, I, I did add this, most of those concerns were about the vacant building ordinance.
Yeah.
And is, our city attorney has said just tabled.
Yeah, we're not even, we're, there's so much controversy about vacant buildings, we don't even wanna talk about, I don't even wanna think about vacant buildings right now.
By the way, there are no vacant buildings anymore.
Oh, yeah, crazy.
Precisely.
Yes.
That's good.
So we don't need those right now.
No, but this is for the future.
Yes.
So, here's the thing, I wanna clarify another point, is, as you said, the funds that I was talking about, the up to forty-five percent fund does not come from the city.
I understand.
They come from the, uh, federal aid.
But does the city have to approve for those funds to be dispersed?
No, that's the individual building owner.
You petition as a, as an owner.
Right.
And then they base off you, but, but first, there's gotta be a historical overlay, or there's no petition to do anything.
Understood.
Nobody wants to take your building.
Understood.
The greatest part about this, I'm gonna say it again, is you can opt out.
John, explain that to me, I don't understand that, so if you just say, if I say I wanna opt out, that's half the buildings in town.
Great, then, then the other half, who, who might qualify, who wants the aid and wants to have a store of overlays, they can opt in.
But when you opt out, does that mean you're not subject to the painting restrictions and all that, see, that's where it's confusing.
No, 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 that's, that's pretty cut and dry, I think, you opted out of it.
It is cut and dry.
You don't get.
Why would we want that, that's confusing.
Because, because that's what y'all want.
No.
You stand up, no, 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 hold on a minute, Vic, hold on a minute, Vic, hold on, I'll let you have your time, you let me have mine.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Time after time, workshop after workshop, meeting after meeting, we kept having people come in here and say, we don't want this, and on the flip side of that coin, we kept having people say, think it's a great idea, so the ordinance that we built was to pacify both sides, and the people who want it are sitting by thinking, for God's sakes, can we get this done? Because we would love to have our building in a historical overlay and do this, and the people who don't can whistle as they walk down Main Street because they opted out. And I don't understand what the confusion about that is, you either want it or you don't, and if you don't, then get out and get out of the way, so everybody else who does can have it, and it don't affect you one bit. You can paint your.
Flamingo paint, that's your, that's your business.
You, you might get some pushback from the rest of the city, but as far as historical overlay, if you don't wanna paint it the power of the historic district, then don't paint it. But again, I'm gonna say, you, if people come in here all the time, who own businesses downtown, including you, Vic, and I respect you as a businessman, I think you've done a lot of great things in this town, but I'm gonna say to you that you've come in here and you talk about the love of this town, and the love of the history, and the love of Autumn Trails, and you wanna give all you can to Windsboro and, and make it shine, and, and put it on the map.
Yes, sir.
There should be no reason why you wouldn't wanna be a part of the historical overlay.
I, I, I would be, unless I'm being bullied.
Absolutely not. Nobody wants to bully, you, look, here, here's my recommendation to you, here's my recommendation to you.
Okay. I, I have been bullied. I've seen other people be bullied.
You wanna?
I've seen a sign that was gonna say, welcome to Windsboro.
Let's talk about this one, though, I don't, I don't care about the past, we're talking about the present. Here'd be my recommendation to you, Vic, if you like the historical overlay, then get on board with this, and then get on the committee, and then you can be a part of the voice that decides what you get to do with your own building inside a historical overlay with the money that you get with the grant. Think it's a beautiful idea, you want it, be a part of the deciding factor who gets it.
Understood, understood.
I mean, the, the, the power of this overlay is put right into the, into your lap, and everybody else who owns businesses downtown, the buildings that qualify, and you get to decide. I don't, it's, it's, it's not even a part of us, all we're trying to do is say, guys, can we pass this through and get this done, so that you can have the power to do what you wanna do.
John, I understand, all I'm asking, let the attorneys look at it, y'all review what they say, give them enough time to do it, and we'll all be moving on to, like, enjoying what we've worked hard for.
Amen.
Amen?
Amen.
All right, good to see you.
Have a good one. Does any, Miss Catherine, I don't mean to stop you real quick, but you've been up here twice, so just let me just see if there's anybody else that would like to speak before. Dealer? Dealer, somebody? Okay, Catherine, we got one more time, we're gonna let you go up, three minutes, and that's it.
I'm sorry, but I'm, I was an ER nurse for twenty-five years, and I listened critically, and I have things to say. But one of the things is, is I want to know if this new, um, plat, um, or area is gonna be where it can be observed on the city website.
And are you talking about the, where the historical overlay district will be?
The new, you were talking about you had a new drawn area.
We haven't drawn it yet.
New version.
A new version?
We have.
Oh, the ordinance.
The ordinance is on the website, yes.
Well, it defines it by street boundaries.
Finds it by streets.
It's defined by streets.
So, nothing's been drawn, but, but the definition by streets is on the city.
Yes, ma'am, correct.
Okay, so who's gonna draw it up, or it be simple for the citizens of Windsboro to see exactly?
It would take me drawing until we know who's gonna opt into it.
Catherine, and, and with all due respect, could I invite you to go read the ordinance and, and, and have some answers and some, and then come back to us?
Sure. Sure.
So that, I mean, I, I don't mean to sound disrespectful, but a lot of times we get people come up here and comment, and they've never read any of it.
Well, I've read some.
So let's, it's on the website, I would invite you.
I was just asked to ask if there was a plat of it where you can see it exactly.
Yeah, again, I, I might ask you to read the ordinance and, and look at the streets, and, and, and then, as far as drawing a map, there's no, there, there's no map. We've gotta be able to move forward with this before anybody can have a map, with the best we did was street names, borders, and it's basically the downtown district as it is, as it stands now.
Okay, so you're gonna move forward with ordinances before you draw a plat?
The, if I may clarify something, since these are contributing buildings, which have to be determined whether they actually have architectural features that are contributing, that are historic, we, there's no way we can possibly draw a plat, because those haven't been identified yet, and the plat would be within those borders, and then individual buildings would say, this would be a contributing building, this would be a contributing building, this is not a contributing building, so there's no possible way, we can, I don't know what you mean by plat, but we cannot draw a plat, you know, at this time, because we don't know where the contributing buildings are, we don't know who wants to opt in and say, we wanna be a part of the historic district, and who wants to opt out. So until, until we know all those things, then we cannot show a map, if this building is part of it, this building is not part of it, this building is a part of it. It's impossible to do, because, again, it's volunteer, it's volunteer.
Okay, you are aware, aware that people read and do things in different ways, some people can read things, and it's very clear, and a picture can also paint a thousand words. So what I'm not understanding is, you're gonna put forth penalties and different clauses and this kind of stuff, but you don't even have an idea of who you're gonna penalize yet.
Incorrect, that's 100% incorrect, we are, if you, if you, if you.
This is what I've been hearing tonight.
Okay, well, if you are the kind of person that needs a visual, then the closest thing to a visual that you can have right now is the downtown district. And that, and, because we're trying to overlay on top of the downtown district a historical overlay, and then from that.
Can you tell me where, is it strictly downtown?
No, you can go to the website.
Is it the whole street, no, can you tell me, please?
Oh, man, we're gonna be here all.
Is it the whole street of Highway eleven, from city limits to city limits? Can you tell me, please?
I, no, I would like for you, you just said you're a visual person. So, for that reason.
I'm also a hearing person.
I would like, well, then hear me say that I would like for you to go to the website and pull up the downtown district and look at the map yourself. And then whenever we revisit this in a workshop, then you can have a little bit better understanding of what we're talking about, and it's not just shots in the dark.
But again, I don't see how you can draw up penalty clauses.
There's no penalty clauses right now.
Well, then why are you even talking about fines and this kinda stuff if you don't even have an idea of what's even a fine?
First of all, your time's up, second of all, nobody said anything about penalty clauses in historical overlay, that was in the sign, uh, in the sign ordinances, so.
That's right.
Uh, I thought you said some, I'm sorry, may I speak just a couple more things?
No, I'm sorry, you've had a lot of time.
I thought you just got through saying.
If you wouldn't mind, have a seat.
If the fronts were not meeting your directed clauses, then they would get a penalization of two, up to two thousand dollars.
Thank you for your comments, I really appreciate it, would you have a seat?
I'm not an ignorant person.
Nobody, nobody, well, you ignorant. Is there anybody else who would like to comment? Nick, hold on one second, because the recomments are gonna be limited to thirty seconds, okay?
I just recommend that in defining what the historical significance of each building is, that y'all actually make an effort, who's ever gonna do it, to reach out to the individual owners, so that they can tell you the significant history of the buildings, that's all.
It's a great idea, I like it. Commissioners, anybody, uh, anybody else that we can say about this? Seeing no more discussion than the closeout number five. Let's see here, I think, Greg, if you would, we would like to have a workshop on the nineteenth. Yeah, Monday the nineteenth, at five thirty, if that, uh, is available. Specifically talking about the two items, item number four or five on tonight's agenda, the sign ordinance and historic district.
Yes, sir.
We'd like to invite anybody who would like to come and have stuff to offer, but I'm gonna ask that you don't just come empty-handed. Um, I would like to ask that if you come, that you have read the ordinances, that you have a, an educated position on the ordinances that you would like to offer, help moving the city forward, and offer some insight into the commissioners here on what might be better.
What time would that be?
Five thirty.
About thirty.
July?
No, no, no. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, July nineteenth. So, we're finished, is correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, all items are done, so our next regularly scheduled meeting will be, August the third, at five thirty, and, uh, Tuesday, August the third, five thirty. I now call this meeting adjourned at six twenty-three, thank you.
Thank you.